In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice to this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. Everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mahir Rafiq asked to be excused this evening. Councilman Embarrasson?
Here.
Theodore Chase?
Here.
Robert La Court?
Here.
Shaw Keller?
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Here.
Charles Brown?
Here.
Robert Thomas?
Here.
Rebecca Hilbert?
Here.
Mark Dancy? Chairman Orsini?
Here. For minutes, we have the minutes of the planning board meeting for January 15, 2025.
Hold on. Just Rebecca Hilbert cannot vote.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Is your mic on, Mr. La Court?
Right here.
Thank you.
I just put it on, yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Robert La Court?
Yes.
Shaw Keller?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. Doesn't appear we have any resolutions of one discussion item that I put on the agenda. So let me tell you what this is about. So if you recall, the last meeting, we had an applicant, and we had the public come up, the public in the form of councilman Carl Wright. And he had mentioned that a number of his constituents were going to be here, but they kind of lost track of the meeting because it had been postponed twice. So I got to thinking, and on the advice of counsel, that we can actually amend our bylaws to require an applicant to renotice. I thought about this a little bit, had some conversations with Mark and Peter, and what I propose is simply, is very simple. If the applicant is heard, so we have a hearing, there's people here, let's say tonight, and for some reason, we have to have a continuation. Christine will announce when that continuation is, and the applicant will not have to renotice. But if a hearing is scheduled and no hearing takes place, and if you think about Hamilton Street application last time, that actually happened in October, it was rescheduled to January, and it was rescheduled again to when we actually heard it a couple of weeks ago. So my proposal there is if another hearing date is set, then they don't have to renotice. But if they postpone again, then they do. And any permutation of the above that results in hearing being postponed more than once, like, for example, let's say Onyx, right? We heard Onyx, I don't forget when, January, right? And now they're supposed to come back. Now, let's say they're supposed to come back, I think, the end of March. Let's say they don't, and now it's going to be postponed for a second time. We would ask them to renotice. I think that's a reasonable compromise between putting too much burden on the applicant and, you know, letting the public, you know, know, because people just don't follow this stuff and can't be expected to follow it in perpetuity. What Mark has asked is if the zoning board would adopt a similar approach, and then we can simply amend the bylaws all at once, which Pete would do if we agree to this, and we can vote on it at our next meeting.
Can I just ask one question?
Yeah.
When they have to renotice, it is a cost to the applicant or attorney, whomever. What would happen if we have to cancel, say, impaired weather, or if we don't have a quorum? Do we put that burden of...
Yeah, that was brought up. And so, you know, at Peter's advice, what we would do is we would say that the board, on a case-by-case basis, can make a different determination, or reserves the right to make a different determination. Now, frankly, I mean, stuff happens on both the applicant's part and sometimes on our part. And so frankly, I don't, I mean, the cost to renotice is not great compared to what they're spending, so I'm not thinking that I have, you know, a great deal of concern about that. But, you know, we would at least reserve the right to make a different determination.
And just to clarify, so my suggestion about the zoning board is, if possible, just for the ease of staff and maybe just, you know, it would be best if both boards have the same policy, so we don't mix things up. That was really, so, you know, I would certainly suggest that the zoning board have that same discussion. The only other thing I'm concerned about is if it's a homeowner application, you know, and making a homeowner renotice.
Well, that's where, that's where we can use our judgment.
Some distinction can be made based on the scale of the application, the nature of the variance.
And I think you could use your discretion on that, but, I mean, do you have a lot of homeowner applications that get carried significant time?
I mean... Yeah, on occasion, we'll have...
I mean, because most of the time, your homeowners are people who want to come in, they've got a discreet variance that they want to get, and, you know...
Well, I think if there was language in there that, you know, and Peter, I'd obviously defer to you, and then the zoning board attorney, you know, if there was language in there that, you know, I don't know if I would confer, Christine and I would confer with the board chair?
We can figure out language that'll allow for somebody to make a different call on certain case-by-case basis for equitable considerations.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, we'd be reasonable about it. The two homeowner applications that I can think of, which were both denied, the one guy did come back.
Yeah.
But, I mean, that wouldn't have required a renotice because we had a hearing and then he came back.
Yeah.
So, you know, if people are here for Christine to say, "This is carried to such-and-such a date," like now, Hamilton, right? They got heard, they had heard for preliminary. They don't need to renotice for, say, final, right? Because that's just going to come, and it's going to be on the agenda and website, and anybody who was here, which unfortunately weren't many because of this exact problem, would have known.
Can we better understand what's the burden placed on the applicant around renoticing before making a determination? I like, you know, what you presented, but what's the burden? Help us understand the real burden.
I don't know, Mike. Do you know the answer, Mike?
No.
Okay. So what has to happen is there's a 200-foot list provided. So the applicant, anybody who's within 200 feet, they have to send out certified mail to them, so that would be a cost. And then they have to go to the Courier-News, and then there's three different, like, what is it? Just say Comcast or something.
Utilities.
There's also three utilities that need, so the burden would be that they would have to pay for the certified again. So as we're saying, you know, it does put a cost on some of the, you know, the smaller ones, the residents.
Right.
Which, again, we would reserve the, we would have a clause in there that we reserve the right to make, you know, a reasonable determination. But to me, you know, the cost of, you know, disenfranchising, if it's carried multiple times, and we've seen for a number of applications, is offset by that.
Yeah, and I'll just say, you know, it's, the burden is also, I mean, Christine and I sometimes are dealing with people, what is zoning?
Right.
What's a variance?
Yeah.
So, you know, if you're telling, you know, an applicant who's represented by a land use attorney, per our bylaws, you need to renotice, they know what's involved, they do that every single day.
Yeah.
Talking to a homeowner who doesn't understand, you know, what a variance is, because they're laypeople, they don't do this all day long, that, just that confusion, in addition to the cost that Christine mentioned, is something we'd like you to keep in mind.
So what would you need, is would you need, like, a motion, or would you need some sort of, like, indication from the board that...
Just, please, prepare something for us to consider at our next meeting.
Does anybody in the board have any objection to that? Okay.
Okay.
Got it. Thanks, guys.
All right. With that, we go to public comments. So this portion of the meeting is to open to the public for any general planning comments. So if you are here, in reference to L.I.N. Franklin Development Group, that hearing will have a separate public opening for any questions for that particular application. So with that, make a motion to open to the public for general planning comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is open to the public for any general planning comment. Seeing no takers, I move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And that leads us to our one and only hearing tonight, which is L.I.N. Franklin Development Group LLC, PLN 250001. And I think before I turn it over to your representation, I would like Peter to briefly explain to the board the background.
Okay. So this is a matter that ended up in litigation, and currently, this application is being heard at the direction of the court. This is a court order that remanded it to us to hear. So to the extent that we have timelines that are a little more constrained than we would usually have under the municipal land use law, this is a case that the court would like to see disposed of and us to report back to the court in the near future, so...
March 25, I think.
Yeah, exactly. So some of the things that we would typically see, say, DEP permitting that is already in hand, isn't something that I believe is going to be capable with the applicant. They have a permit that is currently valid, but they're going to need to go back to the DEP for, given the court's direction. That would be something we would consider a condition, that we might not regularly consider a condition, or some minor, you know, re-engineering of the site in response to comments. Typically, you would want to see revised plans. I think you might be in a situation where you would rely on your professionals a little more in this situation, based upon what we have before us tonight. That being said, you still have the ability to hear the application and ask your questions and make your decision based upon what evidence is deduced, but those are just kind of the unconventional ways that we may have to handle this one, just so you know.
So just to be clear, the court did not, in any way, this never came before the court for, that any board had made a decision and that we would treat this differently than any other application.
Nope. This is just like any other application.
Other than to hear it.
Just to hear it.
Okay.
All right. So with that, floor is yours.
I agree with that articulate rendition of background. Peter, I would ask...
I don't vote.
I would ask for confirmation about our notice so that the board has jurisdiction.
The board does have jurisdiction to hear the app.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I'm Doug Wolfsen, W-O-L-F-S-O-N. I represent the applicant E.L.-ION. I'm not really sure myself how to say it, whether it's E.L.E.I.O.N., but it's a bunch of partners that are involved in property ownership on the particular property that you have before you. As Peter said, this is an application for site plan approval, involves two warehouse buildings of 75,000 square feet each. Based upon the zoning ordinance that was in effect at the time we applied, it is a permitted use. We're seeking no variances. We have received and reviewed and are prepared through our witnesses to respond to the letters from your engineer and from your planner. We have only two witnesses, the engineer, who will go through what we're proposing, and the review letters, and a traffic engineer to make sure that you're satisfied that the internal circulation and egress and egress from the site is satisfactory to all of you. So if you would permit me, Mr. Chairman, to just call a witness and get going.
Please. Thanks, you. Thank you, Doug.
Somebody swear at him, please.
If I could get you close to a microphone and have you raise your right hand for me. Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
My name is Craig Herman, H-E-R-M-A-N-N. I'm a senior project manager with Paul Sockaloss against Starator, PSNS. Address is 3 Mountain View Road, Warren, New Jersey.
Craig, just tell the board a little bit about your background and your qualifications so that we can offer you as an expert in the field of engineering.
Sure. I have a Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering from Rutgers College of Engineering in 1996. Means I've been practicing for about 28 years now, which is crazy. I've been a professional engineer in New Jersey since 2004, and I've been accepted as an expert witness, both on a private and on the municipal side, in towns such as Tewksbury, Hackettstown, Belleville, and Warren County, Montefello, Emerson, Edgewater, Norfelen, Bergen County, Biscataway, a couple of towns in Morris County, and I'm currently appointed as the Planning Board and Zoning Board Engineer in Holmdell Township.
And your license is in good standing in current?
Yes.
He is accepted as a...
I'm obliged. I was just about to ask that question, but thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Craig, give the board the benefit of an overall view of the site and what is actually being proposed before we go through the review letters.
Sure.
And just for the record, anything that hasn't been submitted to the board already will need to mark. If the board does have it already as part of their packet, you don't need to mark it, so...
But let's identify whether that...
Well, if this is colorized, and ours was black and white, you should mark it.
All right.
As, like, A1. I know we're going old school here, it doesn't look like anybody has a computer that we're going to broadcast, so that's fine. We're used to that.
That's because the attorney is old.
Old school.
Yeah, just mark it A1 and the date.
Well, this was colorized already in what we saw.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, then, you know, you don't have to mark it.
Craig, is this part of the packet that was submitted?
Only if it was colorized. If it's exactly what we have in our packets, then no need to mark it.
I'm not sure if it was colorized. It's a version of exactly what we have.
We'll call it A1.
Yeah, we'll mark it just that way, everybody's happy. Nobody has to worry.
Well, then, paper marking.
Makes reference easier.
Sure does. Okay. So, two warehouse buildings, as Doug had summarized, both are 75,000 square feet each, for a total of 150,000 square feet of warehouse and office area. It's block 8802, lot 13.01, and we are frontage on Route 27, which the sheet up is essentially north. Route 27 is to the east of the project, and to the north, right above, right outside of the viewport, is Veronica Lane, and to the south, we have Bennett's Lane. Some of the surrounding land uses, we have commercial and office uses. To the north, we have commercial and office on the east side. Also, there's some residences along Route 27. Across the street, there's residences on Route 27. We have an open space area right here that is in the residential zone, and that fronts on Bennett's Lane, and we have residential property here, and I believe this is an old bank property. The site itself is generally open space with some tree lines, and it's an actual farmland with row crops, and there is a stream along the Westerly property line. To the west is another warehouse use, and the proposal is to have our access on all of our utilities from that site.
Just to note, I don't think that any of the residential properties on this side of Route 27 are actually used as residences. I do believe there's sort of...
That's my understanding.
...office, professional, dentist, things like that.
We don't have, you know, the deeds or...
I mean, they are houses that have been repurposed. Now, on the other side of 27, yes, you have residence.
Well, so we didn't know exactly what was being occupied and what wasn't, so we don't want to testify to something we weren't sure of.
Right. And that's why we just wanted the board to understand that I don't think that on that side of 27, you're directly impacting any residential uses on 27.
And the property fronts on, at least in a couple of spots on Route 27 as well, correct?
Correct.
And what is the zoning in between the Route 27 and our property?
OP.
Okay. So the OP is not, does not permit warehouses?
No.
Correct.
But we have no disturbances, no improvements within the OP zone.
Okay. All right. And we will address that when we get to those things in the review letter about the requests and observations made by, I think, both the planner and the engineer with regard to emergency access.
Okay.
All right. So unless the board has any questions about the orientation of the site and the proposed use, I will go to the engineering letter, which I don't know that you independently mark that.
I do have a quick question. Excuse me. What's the access to the site from 27? Is the access from 27?
There's no access from 27.
Where's the access point?
Go ahead, Craig.
The access point is going to be along this driveway that connects to the warehouse building to the north, and that has a driveway to Veronica.
Okay.
So let's be clear. So you actually won't have your own separate access onto Veronica. You will be leveraging the access of the much larger warehouse down the way.
Correct. There's going to be easements across the...
So this is like an internal access road that then takes you out to that?
Takes you out to the warehouse driveway network and then to Veronica, yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's not an unimportant point, because obviously, you know, the more consolidated that access can be, as it is in this case, you know, the safer any movements will be.
Better everybody likes it.
Yeah.
And we control that as well, so it should be no problem. Although I understand there'll be some requirement, if there's an approval, for a condition that the easement be drafted and reviewed by Mr. Vignol. All right. So is it the board's policy to independently mark or just make reference to the review letters?
Just make reference, and generally, the way we run things is, if you are going to comply with everything in the letter, then simply state that. If there's points that you cannot comply with, can comply with, like, three quarters of it, half of it, none of it, then we obviously want to have that brought out. And then the board will ask questions, and Mark will, you know, the planner's report, et cetera.
So you understand, Craig, that we're going to go through the engineering report, which, for the record...
It was dated February 7.
February 7, 2025, from Darren Massey, Township Engineer's Office, and that will be the first review letter that we will address. So understanding the chair's direction, where there's just a statement, let's make a note that it's just a statement, and where it is asking us to do something, say we will comply or we won't.
And you don't have to go through it point by point. I mean, if it makes a statement, it's a statement. If it says, "The applicant shall," and you're going to "shall" do that, and you agree, I don't want to hear it. If you can't, or if you can only do some of it, or if there's a but, or if, or an and, then we should discuss. But if you say, "I comply with the whole report," then that's great.
All right. Well, then, maybe I can help a little bit. So on B, general site improvements, the first 1 through 10 on page 2 are either statements or will comply. Is that correct, Craig?
Yes.
All right. 11 on page 3, the plans should be revised.
Will comply, yes.
All right. And number 12, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I will take that.
Sure.
That's a question that relates to what the engineer has kindly underscored and put in bold about our flood hazard area permit. It is valid as we speak, but it will expire before the board were to adopt a resolution of approval, if it were to do so. So we understand that we do have to go back and show them the calculations under the new regulations and get a new delineation. We understand that if it's different from what's being proposed now, we would have to come back to the board, and we understand that if there were to be an approval, it would have to be subject to the condition that the DEP issue us a flood hazard permit, and we comply with it. If that's acceptable to the board and to the chair, we'll move on.
Yeah, and I think that there's that aspect, and I think it's kind of what number 12 is asking is, I guess it's designated as a C1 stream, and the township has an ordinance that I think it's required of a 300-foot buffer. So I think it's not just the flood hazard, but whether it complies with the township's stream corridor preservation ordinance.
I can't disagree with that. I mean, we have to comply with, unless you're preempted, and I don't know that you are or you're not, we would comply with whatever the law requires, certainly.
Okay. So your site plan can work with a 300-foot buffer from that stream? That would be great. I believe, and I asked Mark this before the meeting, because I can dimly remember, but the R40 zone that abuts your property, I do believe is in State Planning Area 4B, which is probably the second most restrictive, right? 5 is you can't build anything at all, and I think 4B is almost the same. So I think that that's why it is that way, because of the fact that you do have a stream that ultimately, I think, feeds probably 6-mile run, so...
Well, it's a category 1 stream, which gets extra deference.
Right. And so that's why I'm pursuing this a little bit more, but the applicant says you will comply, then...
And we do have to comply.
Yes.
So I was just informed by Mr. Almbach, the Director of Engineering for the applicant's parent company, that the cross-access easements are already in place...
Okay.
...for the access through the other warehouse site. So we'll show that to you as part of our...
Yeah, just got a copy of those.
I actually think we're going to get to that next, if number 13 is any indication.
Well, this is different, perhaps, Mr. Chairman. Number 13, I think, relates to the issue that we had discussed briefly, which is crossing over a zone where the use of warehouse or truck traffic is not...
Yeah.
...specifically permitted, meaning the OP zone. I don't know whether Mr. Vignol wants to take a position on that, or have me do it, and he'll say whether he thinks I'm right or wrong. What's your...
I always like to tell you whether you're right or wrong, so if you'd like to let us know, I'd happily jump in.
How the switch is of the seats, right?
It's really nice to be sitting up on the dais.
Yeah, don't, you know, it's easy to get used to.
I understand.
So, and thank you for that. In any event, our view of this is that the emergency access is not the same as the cases where someone runs a residential, a truck traffic through a residential area because it was permitted to be a warehouse, but the residential zone becomes the main public driveway or public street. Those cases do say that you would need a devariance in order to do that, but there is nothing that indicates that for emergency access, where the primary user of the site is not using it, it's only being used for ambulances, fire, and police, that is a permitted use everywhere because of the need for public safety and police power generally in the municipality. So it is our view that, from a legal perspective, and perhaps Mr. Vignol will weigh in, that that does not trigger a devariance, and therefore, if you were to ask us to provide an emergency accessway through the OP zone as a condition of any approval, I'm authorized to say that we would accept that as a condition.
And I can indicate that Mr. Wolfsen and I did speak about this. I also reached out to Mr. Healy about it, and there seems to be a distinction between an access driveway, which would create, intensify the use on the site, in which case, it might be a D1 variance, versus an emergency accessway, which is really only there on an as-needed basis for your first responders to get to the site in order, for public safety reasons. So I think that distinction would be appropriate, and I don't think it would require the applicant to get a devariance in order to provide that. And Mark, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
No. I'll just, you know, draw a, well, first of all, I would say two other things. Maybe one is it's not something that is required by the ordinance. This is a recommendation by the board's engineer, as well as the Director of Fire Prevention. So it came as a recommendation to address public safety, not something that the applicant needs for their site plan. And I'll just, just so the board understands, too, there was another application, all the warehouses to the west, where they actually did have to go to the zoning board because they had their basins in the residential zone. And that allowed them, you know, that was a part of their functioning site plan, extended into the residential zone. And I, for the reasons stated by both the attorneys, I don't think this is the same.
And I do agree with the clarification by Mr. Healy. I would point out just one reservation. Since it's Route 27, we will need the DOT to approve the emergency access. We don't, we don't think that they'll have a problem with that, but it is not up to us...
Right.
Or unfortunately, the board. It's going to be up to them, because they, you know, they're the know-all and do-all and be-all for state highways.
Right.
So we have to live with them.
Yeah. And just to enlighten the board, so, I mean, one of the ways that you would address a fire at this site is obviously through the driveway that they're going to share with the huge warehouse that's on Veronica already. Now, if that warehouse were on fire, let, for example, you got a problem, right, that this addresses because you would have this emergency access use. So it's not, I think, as has been explained, well, sort of an accessory to the actual primary use. You're not going to be able to bring in more trucks because you're not using that as clearly for emergency. I assume there would be some sort of control, like a bollard and chain, or a lock, or a key, or whatever.
Whatever the fire department wanted.
Yeah, yeah, whatever they want to control access to it, that only fire, emergency vehicles would be able to get there, so.
If I could make one further point, it would be, this emergency access, if it were available for pedestrians, then employees could commute to the site by the bus on Route 27, get off, I think there's a bus stop approximately where this would come out, and walk into the site instead of driving to the site. So that would be just a useful point about the emergency access.
Great point, and I don't see any reason why that would be prohibited. Hang on one second. I'll have to ask a question. So Mr. Almbach has asked me to make sure that we don't trigger that D by making a sidewalk or some other kind of an improvement there that is not then, quote, "for emergency purposes." I think it probably does fall in the same category, but I just want to be clear and thank Mr. Almbach for bringing it to my attention. I don't want to inadvertently cause a problem for the board or for us.
Yeah.
If there were to be an objector, if there were an approval, that that somehow, you know, lost your jurisdiction because it became a devariance. So we certainly don't have any problem, Mr. Chase, with pedestrians using it. It makes great sense. But I wouldn't want to make sure that we wouldn't do any other improvements that were not intended for municipal emergencies, you know, fire, police.
Yeah, and as an emergency access, I assume it would be improved, it would be paved, and so, yeah, we wouldn't ask you to put a sidewalk or do anything that, I take your point about making it central to the use itself, which is what we want to avoid.
Yeah, and if it's for commuters, that somebody could argue that, that it's being done for that purpose, even though from a practical and logical standpoint, you're reducing traffic by having people, you know, take mass transit, but you never know what a judge will do.
I think, I think the most logical way to handle it is to say that it's an emergency accessway, and if pedestrians see fit to want to use it because it's there, that's something, but we're not creating necessarily a dedicated pedestrian accessway for fear of triggering the devariance.
Right, and you're not asking us to put up signage that says pedestrians are permitted or anything like that. So I think that, Mr. Chase, it's a great point, and we obviously don't have any objection to that.
Good.
Subject, as I said, to the DOT, making sure that it's.
Right.
Okay, and we don't have any reason to think that they won't, but we just want to make sure that we're covered in the event that there's an unpredictable response from them. So back into the engineering review letter, I'm showing that 14 through 18 are will complies.
Yes.
19 is will comply.
Yes.
And 20 is, is the soil erosion. So that's subject to the, was it Somerset Union County Soil Erosion Conservation District?
Yes.
And we'll have to comply with whatever they say, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and of course, Mr. Vignola, that would be obviously a condition of any approval the board chose to grant us on that. What about number 21, this issue about the abruptness of the driveway aisle?
So I believe they're referencing this abrupt shift here, and this really relates to the conservation easement, that the language in easement requires us, based off of the flood hazard area, kind of pushes in a little bit to the back driveway there. So it's a wide driveway, it's 26 feet wide, it's slow-moving traffic, there's no trucks or anything on that side, it's going to be cars. So we don't see it as being an issue.
One.
Parking spaces over there, is it possible you could eliminate one or two and soften that?
We could, we can do that, and I just spoke with a traffic engineer too, and one thing we could also do is maybe throw, put some striping here since it is so wide, just put some striping to kind of lessen that abruptness of it and push the cars around it. So I think there's some ways we can do, and we can work with their engineer to figure out the best way to handle that.
Yeah, we would prefer not to lose the parking, but if that was something that the board felt made it safer, obviously, we would be considered seriously that request. And also the striping, we could include as a condition of any approval the board chose to grant.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would just suggest that they, the engineers meet and.
Yeah.
Work out the best solution.
I mean, the board would say that, you know, we'd rather have that type of engineering solution you described than to encroach on the stream corridor and push that further. We would prioritize a stream corridor. I think there's engineering solutions that you've described that can address it.
Agreed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 22 is a will comply?
Yes.
If the chair will permit me, I'd like to skip.
Yes.
C because we have a traffic engineer to testify as to those.
Sounds good.
Grading and utility comments, so number one's a will comply, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And now what about number two, the service connection loop issue?
We'll work with your, we'll comply, we'll work with your water department and your fire department to provide a water system that they require.
Mr. Chairman, all right with that?
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, none of us woke up as engineers, so, I mean, if you're going to comply with the, we don't need to go through point by point, you're going to work it out with the engineer, that's fine. I mean, the other things that you've brought up that you specifically wanted to discuss, that's fine as well.
All right.
But I mean, I can't, I can't second-guess an engineering report, so we would just say you're going to have to work it out to the, you know, condition of approval is you're going to work it out with staff if there's any discretion. I mean, I get all this, like, the drainage pipe should be six inches wide. I don't know that. I'm not going to pretend to know it, I'm just going to say, you know, if you can't comply, you don't work it out.
We lawyers pretend to know that. So number three is will comply, and number four is a statement?
Yes.
And then on the next page, which is number five, five through the first 11 are will complies, correct?
Correct.
All right, so for some reason, by accident, there are two number 11s on the sheet, so the second number 11, perhaps you can explain what is talked about there?
So, yeah, so there was a question related to the retaining wall on this side of the site and what happens with the grading in this area. So as I indicated, there is a stream on the west side of the property, and really, the stream kind of begins here. So the way the natural grading is now, there's actually a swell right on the other properties that runs down along the property edge to that, that start of that stream, and that will be maintained, you know, it's on the other property, so we're not touching it. So there's, our wall is really not blocking anything, it's on the side of the swell that already exists. So the existing train is pounded for remain.
All right, number 12 is will comply?
Yes.
And turning to page six, 13, 14, and 15 are will complies?
Yes.
All right, so how about landscaping E and lighting?
Will comply.
All right, number one is will comply?
Yes.
Number two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Four is their concern about the survivability, so you'll work with the township's professionals to make sure that the.
Yes, well.
Trees that are being done are trees that are likely to survive.
Correct, we'll pick the, we'll work out with them the landscaping to be put there.
Okay, so that would be a condition that we would find acceptable as a condition of any approval, Mr. Vignola, as well. And number F, environmental impact comments?
Yes, we'll address.
Number one is will comply, two?
Yes.
So just hold on for a second. For number one there, vegetated swells proposed for stormwater management designed as green infrastructure, all references should be removed. Oh, okay, so you're not proposing any vegetated swells, and so I guess there's reference.
We, we are proposing some vegetated swells, especially, it's a swell along the southern property line within the vegetation, but in terms of New Jersey DEP green infrastructure, there is no vegetated swell.
Okay, I get it.
So it's just.
Under their classification.
So it's not for stormwater management, it's for?
We're not getting credit for stormwater management, but it helps guide stuff around.
So that's more of an administrative thing, okay.
Yes.
Two, you said was will comply?
Yes.
And three is updating the EIS, that is a will comply?
Yes.
On stormwater management on page seven, the first two are statements.
Yes.
And then three, four, and five are will complies?
Yes.
And six is sort of a statement and a will comply?
Yes.
And seven makes reference to what I had referred to earlier, which was the expiration of the flood hazard permit and our obligation to get that reissued consistent with the new regulations. It is a statement, but we understand that that would be a condition of any approval the board chose to grant. Eight is also a statement, and nine through 13, are they will complies?
Yes.
Turning to page eight, 14, 15, 16, 17 are all will complies, is that correct?
Yes.
And what about 18?
Yes.
That's a will comply?
Yes.
Okay, and I show that 19 through 26 are will complies?
Yes.
All right, turning to page nine, 27 is will comply?
Yes.
And number 28 asks about a geotech report, what's the status with that?
We have, there is a geotech report, it was in the, well, essentially will comply, there is a geotech report, it was in the appendix of our stormwater management report, but we will coordinate with the engineer to make sure that not only that he sees the testing that we've done as far, as part of the DEP permit, we're going to need to do additional soil testing for the stormwater management BNP as we propose.
Mr. Wolfson, excuse me, the videographer said he cannot hear you, you need to speak directly into the mic, please.
Will do.
Thank you.
My wife says I don't follow directions well, but you, I'm going to ask you to write me notes.
So he just texted me and said he can't hear you.
Gotcha, thank you. Okay, so 28, that relates to the flood hazard permit, but it's also will comply, right?
Correct.
All right, and 30 through 32 are will complies?
Yes.
33 asks that the drainage pipe be relocated from being proposed underneath the dumpster pads. Is that something that we would consider or would work with him on that?
We could consider, we can work with it, again, it's extra drainage pipe, so that's why sometimes we try not to do that, but.
We're not sure necessarily why that is done, but we will endeavor to cooperate with the engineers to the request, and I don't expect it to be a problem, Mr. Chairman. 34 is a will comply?
Yes.
And the manual, that's a will comply?
Yes.
And as to the maintenance miscellaneous?
Yes.
Paragraph one, A through I is will comply?
Yes.
And then on page 10, these are the other approvals that we will need as well as additions to the site plan, they're all will complies, is that correct?
Yes.
And that completes the review of the engineering letter. Mr. Chairman, would you prefer me to go right to Mr. Healy's letter?
Yeah, let's do Mr., yeah, let's do Mr. Healy's next, and, you know, again, the other reports, like fire prevention, police, whatever, environmental, if you're going to comply or whatever, or they're just statements, we don't need to go through those chapter and verse, and then we'll just go from there.
Am I not doing it in a manner which the chair approves?
It's a little more in, you know, detail than, but that's fine, you're going fast enough, and I think, one thing I will ask, though, do you have, I know you're not an architect, do you have any exhibit that you can speak to as an engineer, at least, that you can tell us what the buildings are going to look like?
Unfortunately, I don't have that information.
I'm told that we submitted elevations, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I mean, just like exterior treatments, like colors, and then, you know, just general sort of architecture, we generally do hear something like that.
I recall that the recent architect's submission in the plans, I haven't looked at it.
I don't know that, is that supposed to be color?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I spoke to one of the owners, he said, and he owns the warehouse next door, he said it's going to be consistent with the look of that warehouse. If you want anything more detailed than that, he's certainly willing to try to answer questions of the board, but, you know.
So that, that's huge, basically what he's saying is the exterior, or at least you can represent that what he's, he's telling you, since he's not sworn in as a witness right now, is that it essentially look like a smaller version, much smaller version, because that's, that's huge, right, of what's there in terms of.
That's true, and I believe that's what he meant when he said to me. If you want that from him, he said he's certainly willing to be sworn and say that, but.
No, no, that's okay, it's just that, I mean, I'm looking at the rendering that Peter's holding here and that the board has in front of it, and I mean, it's not, I would assume that unless you're trying to replicate the Las Vegas Raiders stadium, that is not going to be black like that, and like, look like, you know, a starship or a Death Star thing there, and it's going to be something different. So we have a black and white, which doesn't do much for us, which is kind of why I'm asking.
Okay.
So, and I know the color of the other warehouse, and that's, you know, quote-unquote "normal," right, what you would expect, there's, there's some architectural treatments to it, there's, I can understand the architectural treatments here, I can see the bays, I can see, you know, the different divisions and things, but I, I just, it's black and white, so it's just hard to, like, appreciate what it might look like.
It's going to be peppercorn and March wind, just so you know.
Those, those are your base colors.
Somebody's going to do some white sales. Somebody's spending too much time at a Home Depot, I think, but. All right, just, just, just a question, but no, yeah, let's, let's go to Mr. Healy's report.
All right, thank you, we're going to Mr. Healy's report, which for the record is dated February 18th. February 18th, 2025.
There we go.
And it's from Mr. Healy, Director of Planning, to the planning board. And I'm going to skip over to page three, I think it's the first page where there's substantive comments. And A on page three talks about the, the trees and the existing buffer. Is that, that's a will comply to the extent possible, and you will meet with Mr. Healy or the engineer or whomever they believe to be appropriate in order to try to maximize the retaining of the trees?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's important to the board, I think, you know, in general speaking. So, I mean, these are the trees that you, the only trees, because it's open land, that you have on site, and if they are mature and part of a riparian buffer, they should definitely be preserved to the extent possible, and, you know, less that you have to replace. I had no doubt that you'll be able to comply with the tree replacement ordinance probably on site, a fairly big site that should be buffered on multiple sides, but again, less, less to.
So, yeah, so in terms of the grading, we can adjust the grading to minimize the impact. I did speak with my landscape architect, and he thought that the existing vegetation there isn't the best, and that some of the new vegetation would better enhance that. So that's where I think that would be a good give and take with the township and the professionals to determine what's best for that area.
Yeah. Well, you can make additional plantings to fill in any gaps or weaknesses in the existing, the effect of the existing trees.
That's exactly what my landscape architect suggested, so, thank you.
Ask him for part of the fee. Thank you, Mr. Chase. B is will comply?
Yes, yes.
Now, number two A is just an issue there, right?
Yes.
Because why?
So because it's in the OP zone, so it was our understanding, we really shouldn't do any proposed improvements within the OP zone. So if we did something along Route 27 in these areas here, then we're disturbing and proposing.
It's sort of unfortunate that trees might trigger a devariance, but I'm not, I don't want to take a risk that it would, so, you know, a change of grade and putting in the trees.
I'm probably more interested, rather than buffering the OP uses, which some of them have their own buffers in the back, but buffering, you know, and I'm sure there are trees on the, in the existing warehouse that is under the same ownership. They're small, it's going to be a long time before there's any screening, can see that all the way from Bennet's Lane. I'm more, I'm more interested in screening on that side rather than on the, on the 27.
Over here.
Yes. That's where I'd like you to really, really bump it up, and, and I'm not so concerned about OP because, I mean, I don't know.
Well, that helps us, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
If you're.
And we're not triggering any devariances, that's for sure.
Then if the, if the board were to grant approval conditioned upon meeting and trying to enhance the landscaping plantings in that particular area, then we're all safe.
Yeah.
If I comment about that, would it, would it cause a problem to ask for street trees along Route 27?
Well, that would be in the state right of way.
Well, off the state right of way, we put street trees on almost every project, and I don't, I'm not sure why that wouldn't be appropriate here, it would kind of. It would kind of soften the emergency access so that it isn't just standing out looking like a pathway back to nowhere.
Yeah, I mean, the problem is you're putting in a property that's really not part of this application, technically speaking. So now you're improving that property in some way, which you could argue you're doing with the emergency access, but that's very different, right? Yeah, I mean, it's not a bad idea, Bob. It's just that, again, I...
What I would suggest perhaps is it not be included as a condition, but that, you know, the applicant make efforts to see whether or not it's possible to do that kind of thing. And we will act in good faith to try to do it for you, Mr. Thomas. It's, we just want to make sure we don't trigger a devariance, and we want to make sure that the DOT doesn't have anything to say about it.
I'm fine with that. Just make a really honest effort to be able to make it happen.
We want to be good neighbors, and we will.
As I recall, there's a fair amount of tree screening along that stretch, although, of course, there are the OP buildings, the various office buildings. But you also remember that the DOT does have plans for widening 27 down to Bennett's Lane. When they will do that, heaven knows, but...
Yeah, I don't know. You wouldn't want to put plants up and then have them ripped down to widen.
So if they object to the shade tree being put there, does that work? So, Mr. Wolfson, would the applicant have no objection to the township putting a street tree on that portion of the property, subject to obviously...
I can check with ownership.
I mean, but that way, it's...
Yeah, I mean, the shade tree commission can plant trees on any municipally, municipal property.
Right, so...
Now, this being private property, I mean, that might not...
The question is, they just would indicate they have no objection to that. Is that something that would be capable of being worked on? Is that, I don't know what your mechanisms are, so...
Well, I mean, I'm looking at, at aerial photography of the property that the, that the emergency access traffic would go through. And, you know, and as of October 2024, it was basically forested.
Okay.
Which is, you know, one, the property itself is going to serve as the buffer. Two, you know, that emergency access road, we might want to talk about the best alignment of that.
Right.
Because if it goes straight out, it's going to take down a bunch of trees. We might want to talk about maybe curving it to the degree that is appropriate to try to minimize the tree removal. My opinion, I think that's the way to concentrate rather than putting, putting in additional trees on a property that's already forested. I'd say let's concentrate, concentrate on keeping the trees that are there.
I would just defer to the fire official.
Yeah, I mean, Ted's right. And back of the OP uses, maybe not so much Victory Subaru, but they're not particularly in line with your site. But right down from them towards Bennett's Lane, if you're going southbound, there is a fair amount of buffering between the office professional uses, which in some cases are single-family homes or had been in the past, and your site.
Back into page three of Mr. Healy's report. And B, that addresses an issue that was also raised by Ms. Kenyon in her environmental commission report. And I've communicated with the owner, and they have indicated that they would be willing to put islands within there. They thought perhaps eight to 10 would fit comfortably. They're not sure the number, but we would certainly work with township individuals, professional consultants, in order to figure out the best place to put those and see how many would actually fit in order to enhance the look there.
Yeah, and to also preserve the amount of parking that you wish to, wish to need. You could do the diamond shape, right? Which the board has recently heard about in a, in a very recent application to not only have those spaces like diagonal, you, you know, I'm probably preaching, so do that, do that.
And if we do remove the 10 spaces, we'll still be over the required parking for the project.
All right, and how about in, on C, at the bottom of page three?
So this really talks about, I think, this view here from the residential uses down here. This is really the only view of seeing the truck docks. So, of course, we do have our buffer in the front here that as that matures will help block the view. And by putting in, as was suggested, keeping to the greatest extent practical the existing trees there and putting new trees in the areas that'll help buffer it. Also, the owner indicated they can do kind of like wing walls to block the trucks right adjacent to the truck parking there.
So we would accept as a condition of any approval the board chose to give, to put up screen walls, as you described them?
Yes.
In locations that are consistent with what the township's consultants prefer?
Yes.
Okay. And D?
We just talked about the building.
Covered that in your testimony already. And E, the applicant should provide testimony about the screening of mechanical equipment. Where, where is the mechanical equipment located for the warehouse buildings?
The mechanical equipment will be in the center of the roof, so there won't be too visual, too visibly seen from the outside.
Before we just totally leave the architecturals, could you just do me one favor and provide to Mark Township staff, whomever, a colorized version of what the building will, will look like? I, I don't, I don't necessarily want to hear your architect. I understand that it's going to look like the...
Yeah, I said hello, absolutely.
Sounds good. Just so it's on record, and if they have any, you know, comments with the architectural treatments, they can at least have a, have a colorized version on hand.
All right, and F is the problem because there's this discussion about potentially putting a sidewalk, you know, along Route 27's frontage. Again, not, not part of this property, correct? Well, we do have, we do have frontage on two little sort of fingers.
Correct.
Do they go anywhere? They're separate and apart?
Correct. There, there, there's two fingers that reach out to Route 27. If we did sidewalk all the way on our frontage, it would just be a small section here and this one section here. They wouldn't even be connected.
And wouldn't be connected to the warehouses in any way. So we would generally suggest that that wouldn't be an appropriate condition, but certainly...
Yeah, I mean, I don't see where they would go to. I think, I think the bigger thing is what Ted already suggested and that you agreed to is that if there is some, some pedestrian who wishes to be dropped off at that bus stop and walk back to your site through the emergency access, that they, they, they could potentially choose to do that. There's really no place on 27 to walk to. You know, there's not, not a lot of uses there where, if you're working in the warehouse, that you say...
And the trees are right up close to the pavement. Putting in a sidewalk would take down some trees.
And if they're going to widen it anyway, then we may lose those, so, yeah.
So, thank you. We would prefer not to have to address that issue, so we appreciate that very much.
It's conceivable the DOT would say something about a sidewalk, but what's, that's not up to us.
I, I think Mr. Wolfson said it best. The state will determine what happens to 27 in your application as it pertains to it, and I'm more than willing to let them do that.
Much obliged, Mr. Chairman. The G talks about no idling signs. And I think, I think that, was that one of the ones that Ms. Kenyon also talked about?
Yes.
I think her suggestion, which we didn't get to yet, was four idling signs, and we've been authorized to tell the board that we would accommodate that request as a condition of any approval the board chose to grant.
Well, what we're suggesting is that in the loading zone, where the trucks are, assign about every four spaces so that nobody can plead that they didn't see one.
That's what Ms. Kenyon has suggested, and we're certainly agreeable to that.
Good.
As I said, as a condition of any approval the board would choose to give us. H is a will comply with the law?
Yes.
And three...
That doesn't mean you have to put solar on. It just means the roof can support solar.
Yes.
If the applicant were to so choose to do that, either at the top of the building or later on.
Yes.
Correct. And three additional site plans. A is a statement.
Correct.
What about B, existing vegetation, in your view?
So I think that there is, there already is vegetation...
And I think we covered this fairly well already with the, with the, with the buffering. And all I would say is this. The board has been consistent is as many trees as can be retained on site. I mean, the shade tree is, shade tree fund is great. It's used, it was used to plant trees all up and down the Hamilton Street Business District. And will probably be used to replace some of them that died thanks to the drought. But in general, we like them on site. So anything you can preserve and anything you add reduces your replacement obligation of 182 trees and the cost thereof to provide the relief to the shade tree commission. And we've already given you some instructions on where we prefer to see it put.
Okay. What about the top of page five, about moving the driveway? Is that deed restricted?
It is deed restricted. There's an access easement across. So that's, we're putting a driveway within that easement that's already been established.
All right, so without, with respect, Mr. Chairman, we can't move our driveway there based upon the existing site constraints and the DEP regulations.
I would simply make that statement back to the engineer.
And now, C, is a request to discuss the, the parking requirements and whether they can be land banked. I'm authorized to indicate that there, between the dumpster and the EV parking, there's, I think, 12 spaces that we would be willing to bank if the court, if the court, if the chair and the board thought that that was appropriate.
Less is always more with parking. I mean, if what you don't need, it's, you know, there, it's in the approval, if you do need it. But if you don't need to make that purviewous coverage now, the board prefers it. And I don't know what your uses of these warehouses and why, you know, you're, you're going, you know, like, I don't know, somewhat just shy of 50 over the required. So you do have a lot to play with, and the more you can bank, the better. Doesn't prevent you from building them in the future. But if you find you don't need them, these are spec warehouses as a spec they are, then you might not.
All right. My only issue with this, and it has come up a couple of times in some other contexts with land banking, where we've agreed in the past, we wanted to make sure that the ability to use the banked spaces did not trigger having to come back to the board for an additional amendment to the site plan.
No, we basically, basically, so let's say you're going to only build what's required, which is 138, you want to bank the rest. If we give you approval for 181, but you say, I don't want to build those other 40-some, whatever, whatever, I'm not doing the math, but you know what I mean, then, yeah, you don't have to come back.
Right, so we can just make an application for whatever permits required?
Yep.
And the resolution would provide the permission issue without the need to go back to the, to the board so that the code officers are concerned?
It's understood, but I can add that.
I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, I, I think the only way for me that you could possibly use that many parking spaces is if you have more than one shift of employees, because then shift B comes in before shift A leaves, and you need twice the number of parking spaces. We did have an application once years ago to increase parking at, I think it was, well, it was on Cotton Tail. I forget what the business was, but they needed more parking for that reason.
I'm also, I think, informed that sometimes a number of tenants that use the building can also affect that. But we will have a traffic expert who will testify about the parking and everything else and from his mouth instead of mine. D is a statement. We're going to put the ES about a site identification sign. That'll be on Veronica on the monument sign, I'm told. F is a proposed access easement that will comply. It's already in place, I'm told. G is a statement. H and I are statements. That is the extent of Mr. Healy's substantive comments, although obviously he's here.
I think Mark might have a question.
Yeah, just one, just one question. With regard to the, the comment I had about trying to provide some type of screening along the northerly side of the property, the one portion I think you really might want to consider is the portion of the site where this would adjoin that shopping center. Because in that portion, it, it, that is going to be the portion where the loading docks are visible. It's also going to be the portion where, you know, the general public, you know, will have view of it. I also think your client may want to have that privacy and separation between the warehouse use and the shopping center, which is available to the public. You might want to have that separation. So you might want to consider at a minimum a fence.
It's actually owned by a related entity.
I understand that, but...
I'm informed that we will work with you and try to figure out the best way to put some screening there.
People who may want to, may want to trespass onto this site don't know the relationship between the two property owners.
We'll get rid of those electric fences.
Goodness.
With the chair's permission, I'll move over to Ms. Kenyon's report.
Please.
All right. So it's a January 3, 2025 report from Tara Kenyon, from the Township Environmental Commission. The first request was to investigate the feasibility for solar panels on the roof and some other things. I'm informed that our ownership is not prepared to do that with respect. So that is not an area that we would voluntarily agree to comply.
But you did testify that they would be solar ready if you so chose to put solar on them.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
And I think that's what, that that's all that you legally need to do, and that's, that's, that's kind of what Tara is saying, make solar ready at, at a minimum. So that's what you have agreed.
We've agreed to that, Mr. Chairman, as you said. The second paragraph, there's some error that she, I believe she's made in connection with the coverage, and Mr. Herman has been sworn. What is the actual coverage issued here?
The proposed coverage is 53.4%, which is less than the 60% permitted.
Yep, otherwise you'd be requesting a variance.
Correct.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure what she, where she got that number from. It must have been maybe an old plan or something, but I wanted the record to reflect what the actual coverage is, and it's only 53.4%.
I don't recall our discussion at the environmental commission.
Three, I think we've covered in terms of information regarding trees and tree replacement and tree locations. We'll work with your people. Hopefully, that's sufficient, Mr. Chairman, for me to move on to the next paragraph. Again, this idea about the electrified truck capacity, that's a respectful no from the applicant on that. They don't believe that that's actually anywhere in the short term or long-term future, and they're declining to engage in that type of installation.
Now, could I have any Tesla trucks?
Well, what I call the Tesla truck is the ugliest car I've ever seen.
Well, not, not, not one of the Cybertrucks, but you know what I mean. They, they do, I think they do have, you know. And I don't know, you know, obviously, it's something you can do at a later time if things were to go that way, so...
The next paragraph is the anti-idling signs that we discussed with Mr. Chase and the board. The board addressed that. And bike storage and repair stations. Our people are afraid to death of having bikes travel on the same ways as trucks. So, again, respectfully, that's also, I know...
Would you at least have a bike rack where people, if they were going to bike to the site for any reason, you would have a bike rack outside? That's good.
If you give me two seconds, I will ask.
All the, all the people with the, with the sway of laughter.
Yeah, we don't live in a world where everyone has a car, you know?
Yeah, no, I think at a minimum, you should have some, some sort of, yeah.
Mike, a bike rack?
Yeah, he's, clearly you can see he's concerned about the mixing of bikes and trucks.
Well, I'm, I'm assuming, I'm assuming the people who are coming to here and to use the parking lot, for example, are going to be employees, and they're not going to be mingling, I'm, we haven't heard your traffic yet, but I assume, as in most good warehouse applications, that you don't, exactly what you're saying, you don't want to mingle truck traffic with, with non-truck traffic. So assuming your bicyclist or your car or your employee is going to... your employee is going to go to the parking lot and park there in a, in a vehicle, there would be a bike rack there.
If we could just reserve on what we're going to do with that until after you've heard Matt.
Yeah, we can.
And then, and then you can decide what you want to do by way of a condition of any approval you choose to grant. That would be the conclusion of Ms. Kenyon's report. The sewage authority report is, is a non-controversial.
Yeah, I mean, all outside reports, it's always a condition of approval that you will comply, the DNR Canal Commission, whatever, Somerset Soil Conservation, whoever, right? So we don't need to go through.
That report, for the record, is dated January 13. The next report we were given was from Department of Health, and they said, no objection to the application. And that was dated February 18. And that's all the reports that we have gotten. We didn't get one from the fire marshal, but I suspect the fire marshal's concern is the emergency access way. I don't have.
Probably.
There's, let's see, the emergency access driveway, water main in the driveway, minimum of 10 inches, and connected to the water main on Route 27. I think we had already covered that. Additional fire hydrants required per fire prevention. Additional details are required for water, storage, tank and pumps. Fire hydrant detail must comply with township stand detail. And that's it. So I think those all things.
Are those okay?
Yeah. So there we go.
Yes. All right. So that would conclude our affirmative testimony from the engineer. I don't know if it's the chair's practice for us to move to the next witness or if there be questions.
Yeah, well, I'll just open it up to the board for any questions. And since you only have two, two witnesses, we'll hold to the, after your traffic testimony to open the public. Any board questions for the engineer? Ted?
We've actually covered most of the things that I had down to bring up, but I wanted to ask, what are the little blue squares at the southeast corner of the parking? If they're charging stations, they should be dispersed. See, if you have a dual charging station with these cords, somebody parks right in front of it and they get charged up, but they don't move their car right away. You could use the space next to it for somebody else to get charged. But if you have all of your charging stations in one place, then you, you don't have that advantage of having more spaces available. So it's, this is really, we have somebody on the Environmental Commission who's an expert in electric vehicles, and he recommended this. So you might, you might have three on one side of the site and three on one, on the other side, or, but just not quite next to each other.
Yeah, I'm not sure what's involved with the infrastructure to make those ready, but I will go ask the owner whether that's something that they would consider. Is there a place to do it, right?
Yes.
Even if you had them all on one side, but you had two spaces in, two parking spaces in between the parking spaces that are really dedicated for charging, that would achieve my point, and I think it wouldn't mean any additional wiring or minimal additional wiring.
Yeah, I'm told it has to be dual, but they can have spaces in between the two duals.
Yeah, normally.
That's acceptable to the ownership, Mr. Chase.
Yeah.
Any other board questions? If not, you can, you can, you will remain sworn in case we think of anything, but you can proceed to your traffic witness.
Matt?
Thanks, Chris Chairman. Can't go home.
Yeah.
You can never go home.
Good evening. Do you swear the testimony going to provide is the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name and give us your address for the record, please.
My name is Matthew Sekler. That's S-E-C-K-L-E-R. I'm with Stonefield Engineering Design. Address is 92 Park Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey.
Matt, would you give the board the benefit of your qualifications so that they can determine whether you can justify as an expert?
Certainly. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Union College in Schuylkill, New York. I have a Master's in City Regional Planning from Rutgers University. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state with a specialty in traffic engineering. I have a, I am recognized professional traffic operations engineer by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, practicing for over 15 years, been accepted for over 200 boards in the state of New Jersey.
Qualified. Eminently so, it seems. So, yeah.
Yeah, he's my favorite, but don't tell him I said so. Matt, you've done a traffic study with a property in conjunction with a proposed uses warehouse. Just give the board a general overview of what your conclusions are before we get to the engineering report.
Absolutely. And again, that report was dated April 18, 2022. Again, I know this being a planning board application, the focus of the matter is primarily regarding circulation, access on and off the site. However, in the report, we also did traffic counts at the nearby roadway in the intersection of Veronica, Howe Lane and Route 27. Not breaking any type of news, that intersection does have some excessive delays. Luckily, our driveway is over three quarters of a mile away from where that point is. So in terms of the stacking and backups, limited in terms of anything that gets to that distance. It is also a benefit from the design standpoint that we are sharing driveways with other lots and other, other similar uses. So we're not constantly basically opening up and creating more access points or conflict points along Veronica. So I think we'd have a very positive access design. Again, that driveway has sufficient width and sufficient site distance. I worked on that application, haven't heard any complaints since it's opened in terms of site distance or any type of operational issues specific to that driveway. Again, as I mentioned, we did do the traffic counts. We did our typical level of service analysis. This type of warehouse and size of warehouse, again, as I think Chair has alluded to, much smaller, the two warehouses are much smaller than the other warehouses, not only just on our development, but even comparing to the LG site across the street, significantly smaller. So you're seeing significantly lesser volumes of traffic. Overall, during the busiest hours, this site would generate about one vehicle every four minutes or so, which is pretty low turnover when you think of, you know, really the size of the property you're dealing with.
Slowed down a little bit.
Certainly. So overall, in terms of the amount of traffic we're generating in a peak hour, about 25 vehicles in the busiest hour, a portion of them trucks, you know, maybe four or five of them during those peak hours, maybe trucks of various sizes. But again, pretty insignificant increase in the amount of traffic. We're talking about less than 1% increase in traffic along the Veronica Route 27 intersection. So.
And I mean, what you state about that Route 27, Howe Lane, Veronica intersection is well-known to the board. It's been that case before any of your warehouses came online. It's terrible and it will remain terrible. I take it, I don't, I don't mean to be jaded when it comes to traffic at testimony, but as we all know case law, right, when we zone it, we say it's okay. So therefore, we can't do anything about it when it comes to what it generates. So I'm most interested in hearing the internal site.
Perfect. Absolutely. And I appreciate, you know, I normally have to discuss with boards that their focus should be onsite before planning board, but I'm glad that you've got.
Well, I have, I have, I pee.
So onsite circulation, onsite circulation, the vast majority of the drive aisles on the site are 26 feet wide, which is a little bit wider than you would typically experience in your shopping centers or general commercial development. It's a little more generous. Your drive aisles, in terms of where the truck loading will be, that is, has two 60-foot loading bays on either side. You basically have that central court and 87-foot wide area in between those two loading areas. So that's more than sufficient room for any of those trucks to back up. They don't conflict with any of the docks in Building A, don't conflict with Building B. Very positive design there. We do have, the way the site's been designed, the trucks are basically, basically kept in that middle aisle. So they're not driving by this, you know, really where the passenger cars or the workers are parking. In terms of the amount of parking, and again, I know that we've already discussed reducing about 20 to 22 parking spaces on the site, either by planting tree islands or landbanking a portion of them. That still puts us with a compliant number of parking spaces, which would be about 161 if we landbank and remove some spaces for those landscape islands. So that is more than sufficient for the site. I would note that these type of sites, and we've shown basically three office areas in each one, when you do have multiple tenants in the building, sometimes your parking require, parking demand goes up a little bit because everybody may have a receptionist, everybody may have some, you know, operational people in the building versus if it's a single tenant. And this being spec, we don't know. So we want to make sure we have those spaces there. And that's why we also have the landbank spaces. So if for some reason we do need parking in the future, we're not back before the board. So again, overall, the site has been designed with sufficient parking, sufficient drive aisles. And again, I think they're actually slightly oversized to help with the circulation and sufficient access for the trucks to both load and get on and off the site. So overall, I believe this application has met the general engineering standards from a traffic engineering perspective.
All right. And just to be thorough, in the traffic impact study from the engineering report, number two talks about the access for emergency vehicles, service vehicles, garbage trucks, delivery trucks, fire trucks, rescue squad. I take it if it's good enough for the truck traffic for warehouses, how is it for those vehicles?
There's nothing bigger than a WB67 that would potentially load in here in terms of the fire trucks or garbage trucks. That could work. Everything else could work. And again, you've heard agreement from the applicant regarding the emergency access driveway to 27. That would only, you know, enhance the circulation for those vehicles.
And you're okay with the parking being reduced for landbanking and for the central islands, assuming they're not diamonds?
Correct. And again, I believe it's a, you know, definitely a proper way to respond to some of the comments about us having excess parking on the site.
So that, I guess, addresses the first, number one. Two, three and four are will complies?
Correct.
That would conclude the traffic testimony, Mr. Chairman.
So Matt, you can give me a bike rack? Since you
Yes, yes, yes.
You testified the rate that they, that thou shalt not mix cars and trucks.
We can't have bike rack. We would not have it on the loading area of the building.
No, no, I wouldn't suggest anybody do that.
It'd be on the car area of the building.
Probably.
Who would, who would we consult with on that, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Healy or the engineer or both?
Where, where, it's just where to put it?
Where to put it?
Yeah, dignify it. Put it in the front door.
Engineer, I think would.
Yeah.
All right. So we'll make a note of that and agree to that as a condition of any approval the board chooses to grant.
So Charles, you want to?
I have one question. You're, I understand the, the two warehouses you're building are, together, they're probably equal to one bigger one, which is more typical than, has been typical of what the applications we've been getting. I just want to have you go on record with a comment about the entrance of the driveway, the common driveway. We do now have four warehouses or the two that exist and these two that equal one like that. And almost directly across from that driveway is the million square foot warehouse. Do you foresee any adjustments or improvements that might be needed that's to that intersection or to that entranceway? Is there going to be any queuing of trucks either on Veronica or in the driveway? I mean, they're, they're, they're built by, they're spec warehouses, but there's one third more traffic that you can anticipate in a sense. It may not work out exactly that way. And then the second one was, I know you didn't want to deal with off-site improvements, but would you make a statement concerning the Veronica Avenue-Hamilton Street intersection, whether there would be any adverse effect on using that, which has become quite busy with the million square foot warehouse that's over there?
Yep. So I'll address that. So when we did our analysis of the driveway, because we studied not only the Howe Lane, Veronica intersection, but we also studied the driveway itself, we did the counts of Veronica before the two warehouses that are now constructed because this application goes back a number of years. We've included that projected trip generation and our trip generation for these two new warehouses, plus the million square foot one across the street was in operation. And when we studied that intersection, still operates appropriately. I will also note, because I did work on the million square foot warehouse as well, we counted that driveway. It generates about only 20% of what we accounted for when we designed that, when that, we accounted for when we designed that site. So that site is also not generating, I'd say, levels of traffic that we anticipated. It's much less than that. And again, that traffic, our traffic coming out of the driveway, even though they're kind of askew, the two driveways, they'll still be able to work appropriately and efficiently. I think your other question was about the off-site intersection. We do anticipate only about 20% of our traffic heading that, that way. So again, if we're generating 26 cars an hour, we're talking about four or five vehicles going that direction. The remainder of them would actually be going towards Route 27, which we see as the more primary path.
Okay, that sounds positive. Would you happen to know as far as the million square foot warehouse, it's, you're, you're saying it's below your traffic projections. Is, is that going to be, can we look forward to that being a normal, long-term operation? Or is it because it's not fully being utilized yet or?
It wasn't fully, I mean, that, when we did those counts, I think it was three or four years after that million square foot building has been open. So it is mature in the engineering standpoint. I will state that a lot of warehouses are generating less, you know, there's the, we're going to call the very manual-based or direct-to-home warehouses that generate trips above what we typically are seeing. And then anything that is really not that, we tend to be seeing generating less than what, you know, the book values are. So when you average them together, you get a nice average. But the, you know, direct-to-home delivery type warehouses, those things are churning out a lot of traffic. The million square foot warehouses, and again, what these warehouses are designed for, don't anticipate levels of traffic, even what I'm stating at one every four minutes.
So the short answer is we can expect it to continue the way it is in the near future, at least.
Correct. Not knowing their business model changes, but as long as it maintains the model that's there, I would anticipate having those low volumes that you've been experiencing over the years.
And the whole driveway intersection will work without improvements and there'll be no queuing. It might be a left turn, hold up once in a while, but it'll still move as it's moving now.
Yes, as expected, yes. And we do have a pretty long driveway, so it's not the case where if we have two trucks waiting to get out of our driveway, all of a sudden it's jamming up so people can't get into the site. We have a nice, long throat, so that is not a concern at this location.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. The traffic study, I think I heard you say was done in 2022?
It was done in, the data of the report was 2000, April 18, 2022. The data that was collected was 2021.
It was 21. So how much would you say would be an increase of traffic over the three years with the building that's gone up in Franklin and also in North and South Brunswick?
So what we did is we had the counts from 2021. We added what we expected the traffic would be from the two warehouses that are now built but weren't built in 2021. We've added our traffic from our two warehouses. And we also increased the volumes by, I believe it was one and a quarter percent each year for the three years between 2021 and basically 2024, to come up with that kind of growth that you're talking about. So again, the compounded increase of 1.25% each year accounts for general traffic increase. And then we have the two warehouses next to us plus our two warehouses that were added in as well.
And across the street?
That was already open.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I have a question about pedestrian access. It's unlikely that a pedestrian exiting your site for lunch would walk the entire route down to your driveway to come back up to access the Dunkin' Donuts, the Jimmy John's, I think it's Jimmy John's.
Jersey Mike's.
Jersey Mike's at, at the corner there. But there's a lot of opportunities for people during lunch to go out and get something to eat. Ideally, you would have a pedestrian-only connection or easement to the Stop &amp; Shop to allow that to happen.
I don't know the specific grades between them. So like, I
Yeah, there are these.
Couldn't speak if there's, you know.
There's a bridge possibility. You can get across. I, I think it's, you know, to ensure that those businesses continue to thrive, given the amount of people you're bringing in that area and cutting down on the amount of back and forth. I hear that, you know, people in Jersey really live based on Dunkin' Donuts. So there is one.
Yeah.
We're not asking for a sidewalk. We're asking for a connection. It could be a path or something that's dignified to get people across.
Yeah, I think they're looking at whether there's the drainage swell or ditch that might be regulated.
Very engineering solutions across that, though.
Very hard to cross that. I know I can't put down the evidence, but if needed, I would have whoever has this picture testify so what it shows.
There's a really beautiful bridge. You can construct a small pedestrian path across that to allow people to frequent those businesses there, instead of having to get in their cars and drive to Dunkin'. in their cars and drive to Dunkin'.
Yeah, I mean, that is the one side of the street where there's worth anything doing. I mean, you're really not going to do anything on 27 itself, because we talked about whether you'd put the sidewalk and the access easements, right? There's no point in doing that, goes to nowhere. But at least across the street of 27.
No, makes sense, Mr. Chairman, we get it. I'm informed by ownership that they will work with the engineer, see if there's a place that they can do it, and if it works out, that it can be done, you know.
Yeah.
Bridgewater Commons, I'm over here. Bridgewater Commons has something like that, where people can walk across a small bridge.
Yeah, look, it's a great idea. I just had to check to see if there were physical constraints that made it difficult.
Yeah, no, I would just say that if the applicant, you know, could explore that, I mean, it would be great to do it where your driveway is, and to say, we can stripe a crosswalk over Veronica to that. The problem is, there's no sidewalk on that side for then you to walk up to the businesses Charles mentioning. So the other way to do it is the innovative solution that Charles came up with, or a version thereof, so if you could at least agree to explore that.
It's the shortest path, it makes sense, as long as it's physically.
We'll agree to explore and if feasible to implement it.
I mean, I don't like.
It's just something, there's just something to think about, that's all. We're not saying you got to do it.
No, it makes perfectly good sense, you know, and it eliminates or reduces car traffic.
Right.
I get it.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about, if feasible language. I already know it's feasible, I already know it's doable. You have your traffic engineer here who went to Rutgers, where I taught, I'm pretty certain he can vouch, too, that the shortest path makes sense, cuts down on the amount of travel, serves the businesses, the entire community. It makes sense for proper planning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did you teach at Rutgers?
From time to time.
Me, too, law school.
A busy man.
All right. Anybody else have any questions for either of the witnesses? Because if not, Ted, you?
This is really more to the engineer. I meant to, I had it down, and I forgot to ask it then.
He's still under, go bring her back.
Yeah, well, it's just, you have pervious pavement where the trucks will actually, in the loading docks, will that pervious pavement back support a fully loaded trailer?
Yes. Yeah, it's H20 loading, as if it's highway, it's designed for highway traffic, so yes, it'll accommodate it.
Okay. Just had to ask.
Right, yeah, okay.
Television first. All right. If there's no other questions, let's go ahead and open to the public, and then we'll come back. I make a motion to open to the public for any comments on this particular application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is open to the public for any comments they wish to make on this application. Seeing no takers, I move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any summation you wish to make, Mr. Wolfson?
Just briefly, I'm a big fan of brevity. I think that we tried to put together an application that is consistent and honored the catch-up codes in effect at the time of the application. We really have indicated our intent to comply with almost everything that's been requested. I did indicate with respect, there are a couple things we just didn't think we could do, and we would ask the board to consider the application favorably, subject to the conditions that we have agreed to and those that the board thinks are appropriate.
Thank you. Any other board comments or discussion before we put this to a vote? Okay. If not, let's see if I can craft a motion here. I would move to approve with the condition that the applicant will comply with all outside staff reports, those generated and yet to be generated or to be amended, in the case of your, what is it, LOI or?
Flood plane or?
Flood plane or whatever that is, that might be renewed, that will have to be included. The banking of parking spaces is discussed, although the applicant is, will be approved to construct the 181, to bank as many as possible. The applicant said 12, if you can do more than 12, great. The buffering, enhanced buffering on the south side of the, towards the residential side, towards the Benz.
Retaining the existing trees.
Retaining the existing trees to the extent possible. The, what?
Landscape islands and?
Landscape islands, and Charles's access or path, pedestrian path to the uses on the other side of Veronica, that the applicant agrees to explore to the greatest extent possible, the ability to do that.
The emergency access from 27.
Emergency access, yes.
All in my notes. So, yeah, all the conditions they've agreed to.
Well, I just want to make sure I hit the highlights.
You got it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, point of information, you had indicated compliance with the reports. I would just ask the motion to be amended to say, except as otherwise indicated by the applicant. Because there were several, not many, but sort of where we said, sort of no.
Yeah, right, right, like the charging for the trucks and things like that, yeah. So, yeah, compliance with, I was referring more to outside reports, but as well as staff reports, unless the applicant during their testimony tonight has made an explicit, has discussed with the board explicitly why they could not comply.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, that's my motion.
Second. I'll second it.
Charles, are you?
Okay.
Thank you.
Pretty did, yeah. Okay, Councilman in Barson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Robert LaCorte?
Thank you for being quite agreeable on these suggestions that we had.
Yes. Yeah. He'll tell you, that's my middle name.
I heard you, Bob, thank you. Shaw Keller?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragno?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes, I like the joint access roadway. I think we should promote more access easement as we do planning throughout New Jersey, so, great job.
Rebecca Hilvert?
Yes.
And Chairman Arcini?
Yes.
Thank you, board members, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have any other business tonight, Christine, Mark? No? If not, I would make a motion, oh, wait a minute, there is one little piece of business. BI Zone. Mark, you want to talk about, we need to have a, we need to have a board discussion. The BI Zone public hearings have happened, and we need to schedule a date where the planning board is going to talk about this. And you had suggested, what, March 26?
Yeah. Seth, yeah, whatever, let me just confirm that.
The fourth Wednesday?
The fourth Wednesday. So what the thought is, is that, yeah, we've had, as the chairman just said, we had the community meetings, series of meetings with the steering committee, and overall, just to refresh everybody's recollection, this is looking at the BI Zone, we're doing a master plan amendment and an associated draft ordinance. Ultimately, it's going to be, the intent is for it to be adopted by the planning board as an element of the master plan. What we want to do is have the planning board go over it first, you know, at a work session. So we're not going to just lay it before you at a hearing. So we'd like to have, you know, the opportunity for you to review it ahead of time. What we're going to do is, we're going to have the meeting in person here, and then the consultant is going to be on Zoom, so he'll be able to project on the screens and participate as if he was here. It's 2025, we can do things like that. So we're going to confirm, what we're asking right now is to basically save the date for March 26, and we'll confirm within the next few days that that's, you know, definitely the date. We'll also send you, in the near term, I mean, you could look at, you look at it now, but all of the different materials that have been prepared in this study have been placed on the website along the way. So the different minutes, or not minutes, but notes from the different steering committee meetings, both community meetings were taped and are up on the website. The most recent one in particular, I would strongly request that you, you know, review, watch that, so you know basically what, you know, what this is all about. And then, as the 26th approaches, you're going to get a draft document in terms of the draft master plan and the draft ordinance. But, you know, this has been a long process, with a lot of meetings and input from the steering committee and the public. So, you know, again, I just ask that you, you know, review those materials, and then so that we can have a, you know, thoughtful discussion, you know, at that meeting. And then after, assuming that that meeting goes well, you know, meaning the board is generally satisfied with the approach, after that, at some point, we would have a hearing for the adoption of the master plan, and then the ordinance that's in that would go to the council for adoption, for their consideration to adopt.
Yeah, sounds good, thanks, Mark. So hold the 26th. Are we going to need a quorum for sure? Let's just say, I don't know.
You need a quorum to meet, so.
You need a quorum, okay.
And we'll have to do a special meeting notice, but obviously we'll handle that.
All right. Because normally, we can, normally, back in the day, believe it or not, there was a planning board meeting, I think it was the third Wednesday, that was a combined hearing and work session. And as time went by, and we didn't have work session topics, it just became hearing. And then we would have a fourth Wednesday that was just a work session. So that has gone by the board, but now we're resurrecting it for this one thing, so, hold that.
The planning board used to be three times.
Yep.
Imagine that.
All right, so if nothing else, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all in favor, we are done.